We'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order for May eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and we'll call Mr. Veder.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Magsman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment to sign it to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as before.
Second.
Moving to second any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments, anybody like to comment? Up to the microphone, give your name and address, please.
Thank you.
No, she's not here, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The morning board, Melissa Lee, Countryview employee, nursing. Selling Countryview is not the right choice. The staff at Countryview are well-trained and know how to care for persons with mental illness and intellectual disabilities. Our community needs Countryview to remain owned and operated by Blackhawk County. Sadly, persons with mental illness go untreated and wind up in the legal system. These people are not appropriate for jail and you care, not incarceration. Some of these people have medical issues that are also, that are severe also, where will jail send them? Where will we send, where will the jail send them? Anywhere you send them will just cost the taxpayers more money. Finding a bed for someone with mental illness inpatient treatment is not easy. Many are sent hundreds of miles away for treatment. They are, they are then separated from their support from home. Some people need long-term mental health care services without Countryview and beds in AMHI. Where will these people go? Our governor, Kim Reynolds, wants to fix this growing problem in Iowa. Why would we want to cut services when the whole state is looking for ways to expand care for the mentally ill? This makes no sense. Over two thousand taxpaying residents of Blackhawk County have signed our petition to keep Countryview owned and operated by Blackhawk County. Supervisors, please listen to your constituents. Please take time to review the article below and vote to stop the sale of Countryview. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb Vivians has a few things she'd like to say also.
I'm Deb Vivians, I work at Countryview. And while we were out getting petitions signed in the community, we have some concerns that the taxpayers asked us to speak on. The first one is, why didn't they get to vote on selling Countryview since they are the taxpayers? They want to know, why didn't K W, my mind, why didn't K W W L cover anything on Countryview? They cover everything else in Iowa City and Cedar Rapids and Dubuque. The third one is, why would they do this to human beings? They are not machines you can turn off. They are living people who can't help the way they are. The fourth concern is, why does it matter where they live? At Countryview or anywhere else? The taxpayers of Blackhawk County have to pay for the residents' care, no matter where they live. And the fifth one is, why are the board of supervisors' meetings at nine a.m. instead of having them in the evening? People have to work and cannot attend the morning meetings. And the sixth one is, why do they always have to cut programs for the mentally ill? Maybe they should privatize the jail. What are they going to cut next? These are the concerns of the community that they asked us to bring to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Moving on to claims and payments, the resolution to approve the board of supervisors expenditures for the county.
Okay, Susan isn't able to be here today, but she did check over the claims and she says they're all in order. Or the county's claims for this week, total is two hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving to second any discussion. This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Expenditures for Countryview.
That total is seventy-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Susan says those are also in order.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion on this item. This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Morning.
Good morning, board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. A brief update on, the roads closed due to some localized flooding. We do have four roads closed at this time, please see our website for complete list, but a few of the roads would be Team Road in the northeast portion of the county due to flooding on the Waps-Pinnican River. And then, of course, the Cedar River is, has Ford Road, and then Westbrook Road flooded as well right now. So that, we're anticipating those to probably be back open by the end of the week as the water recedes. And then another closure is on Marquee Road where we are replacing six culverts in anticipation of resurfacing that roadway next year. So the public should see our website for a full list of those closures. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Rory.
Morning.
Good morning, board. Rory Givens, maintenance superintendent. Just wanted to inform the board, the jail parking lot project is scheduled to start on May sixteenth. And obviously, the first phase of that project will be removing the concrete. We expect that we'll start taking loads to the landfill starting the week of May twenty-second. The working hours will be Monday through Friday, seven thirty to six p.m., and possibly Saturdays if need.
If you don't have Brett.
I do, yes.
Any need for road closing or street?
At this point, we had our construction meeting yesterday, there is no concern at this point for, for having to close any roads. We talked about barrier around the construction site, we talked about parking for the jail staff, working with the Waterloo Parking Company. I know I'm not saying that correctly, but they've been very, very helpful in granting us some spaces over in the, we call it the jury parking lot, for some of the jail staff vehicles, along with, we'll be bagging meters over there as well. I believe there's eighteen spots over there that we'll be able to park. And then we are working with the jail staff, particularly the kitchen staff, for deliveries to try to preorder as much as we can to lessen the impact during the construction time. Any questions?
Thank you, Rory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Morning, Bob.
Morning. I'm Lincoln County Social Services Administrator. I just want to give you a little update on county social services and the new mental health bill that was passed this year. County Social Services is, is certainly going through a significant transition. We've been impacted significantly by the managed, launch of the managed care organizations. It really drove our costs and created a lot of barriers for access. Now, although there's still challenges, we're in a position now where we're leveraging folks out of our system into their covered services under, under Medicaid, and so hopefully that will bring our costs back in line with, with the levy and a sustainable, sustainable amount. But that will be something that we'll be doing over the next six months. In terms of House File twenty-four fifty-six, there were four key points passed. The first is the twenty-four-seven crisis line. County Social Services had advocated for the last several years to get one twenty-four-eight-hundred number. We had worked with lifelong links. Now the state has identified the twenty-four-hour number with public health. So now that will become the crisis line. It's called Your Life Iowa. It's a, it's a great program, they have texting, they have chat available, they can provide access for substance abuse and gambling needs. So we'll continue to market and make sure our folks are aware of that service. The other piece of twenty-four fifty-six is identifying six access centers. Nobody really knows what an access center is yet, but we know people need access to mental health services. The vision we had been working on is with our crisis center through North Iowa Juvenile Detention Center. I believe that is the, you know, that is the platform that folks envision when they talk about an access center, a place to go besides jail or the hospital, hopefully primarily to divert folks from law enforcement. So we're in the rule-writing period, we'll probably spend this year watching the rules, looking at the rules, and seeing what we need to do to move our crisis center forward to be an access center. We're also looking at the Fort Dodge area, so it's possible that we would, we would host two of those access centers in the, in the state. The, the next piece is they envision twenty-two assertive community treatment teams. An assertive community treatment team is a team of professionals with a prescriber, a social worker, substance abuse counselor, and these are folks that, it's called the, some refer to it as the Madison model, a hospital without walls. We launched our assertive community treatment team here in Waterloo. And over a year ago, again, that was a very costly launch because of the challenges with the managed care organization and their unwillingness to negotiate a sustainable rate. The rate we're paying for assertive community treatment teams is the rate that was being paid back in nineteen ninety-nine. So there is a committee that I am serving on to try to get that rate up so that's sustainable, so we can get additional assertive community treatment teams. And the idea, of course, with these teams is that people live in their home and the service and, and the medical needs that they have are, are brought to them. Very impressed with the job that RHD, Resource for Human Development, has done in the Waterloo area to get the program up and going. They now are serving fifty individuals. We envision going forward, they'll be able to serve as many as, as a hundred. We think there's, there's a hundred, at least a hundred folks in the Waterloo-Blackhawk area that would benefit from this, from this service. The last piece of the mental health bill is what they're calling Irish homes or complex needs homes. How do you serve those folks who get stuck in the ER, get stuck in inpatient? What we've been doing to address that need is primarily through our iStart team. Again, that's a interdisciplinary team that focuses on those folks with behavioral and mental health needs and trying to bring a crisis plan, specialized crisis, specialized mental health services to them. We're very proud that two additional regions have bought into our program, the cross-region over in Storm Lake, or, excuse me, the cross-region in, in southern Iowa, and the Rolling Hills region over in, in Storm Lake. So we, we hope eventually that, that iStart model will be available statewide to, again, bring support to folks with intellectual disabilities and mental health in their homes, with their families, with their, with their providers, and keep them out of corrections and, and hospitals. Any questions for me this morning?
The legislation was passed at state level. What portion of that is being funded through the state?
There was no additional dollars attached to the bill. The twenty-four-seven line, they have absorbed that and launched that, so I, there's, there's obviously an investment there. The, the, the key to the other three services is really going to be the, the reimbursement rate that the managed care organizations provide. I think the bill envisions the region doing the startup dollars. But for example, the assertive community treatment team, we had planned on spending seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to launch that program, to get it up to fidelity, to get folks enrolled. We end up spending double, almost two and a half times that, because when we got ready to, to contract, we ran into all kind of, all kinds of barriers. So we were still funding a hundred percent of that treatment team in July of this year when, when we had planned to have that reimbursed by the MCOs. So until they get a rate that supports providers to do that service, it's going to be very difficult to get the twenty-two teams. The Irish homes is another thing that, the bottom line with complex needs is it's, it's an economic issue. You need more dollars, more intense staffing to support folks in the long term. If they think the county system has long-term funding, that, that would be a mistake. There, there is some dollars to get those things started, there are dollars to fill the gaps for those folks that might have lost coverage, but when you look at the whole mental health and disability system, we're only about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty million dollars in a system, in a five, five billion dollar system. So we're, we're pretty, pretty insignificant from a financial standpoint. So I hope that they're not leaning too much on us, because that won't be sustainable. But that ultimately is the, is the key to, to making these things happen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Not going on to minutes approved for may.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consentative, agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Contracts and agreement, this is a resolution, add the addendum to the agreement between Blackhawk County, Countryview, and County Social Services for the new rate scheduled to cover additional behavioral health support services provided to persons with mental illness to be approved and recommended by Carol Laurie, provisional administrator.
Carol, could you give us an overview of the changes in this?
Carol Laurie, provisional administrator, Countryview. Basically, we have had a contract with County Social Services since two thousand and sixteen, our most recent one, and as we have had that, we had different tiers. We've received notifications from them, like increasing in line with where they're at with their finances, that that rate will reduce, be reduced to fifty-one dollars per person per day. We have four residents that will be significantly impacted by that. They are currently receiving a higher tier rate of one fifty-seven, and they will reduce down to the fifty-one. It's also to be noted that this contract will probably not be renewed next year, and it will probably be our last year with that. And if the county should sell Countryview, then this contract will end at that time. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to resolution.
Second.
Moving to second, any further questions? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. The, this is a resolution that the business associate agreement between Blackhawk County and Freedom Incorporated for Cyber Security Services be approved as recommended by Kim Veder, IT Director.
So moved.
Kim, you got anything going after this?
Yeah. Yeah, Kim Veder. This is one of the things that we need to do for HIPAA, is the associate, associate agreement so that they affirm that they'll take the appropriate safeguards as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Moving to second, this is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business, this is a motion at the travel request submitted by Kim Veder, IT Director, to be approved and checked, direct the chair to sign for same, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eight cents to attend the IC IT major conference in West Des Moines scheduled for June thirteenth to the fifteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion, direct to county auditor, to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh seven on Tuesday, May twenty-second, Boardroom two oh one of Blackhawk County Courthouse, Waterloo, Iowa, on proposed purchase of one tandem actual dump truck, so moved by Blackhawk County Engineers Department.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution at the taxes due and payable of the submitted persons is indicated, including special assessments and rates will change charges, including interest fees and costs in accordance with the provision of four twenty-seven point nine of the Code of Law, be it suspended, and future property taxes on property owned by the persons will be suspended for such time as the person remains the owner of the partial, and during the period if the person receives assistance as described by four twenty-seven point nine of the Code of Law.
So moved. Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on that item? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the lowest reasonable bid received from the Blackhawk Service Company Humboldt, Iowa for fiscal year's nineteen seal code at various locations in Blackhawk County with a bid of one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and fifteen-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, as you know, last week we did open bids on this seal coat project. We received two bids. This is the lower, the lowest bid, this one hundred and eleven thousand dollars from Blacktop Services. I'd recommend that you accept this bid and that we can go ahead and move towards a contract with them. I think I've told you before, this is a new, we are going to be paying for a contractor to do our seal coating this year, possibly looking at the county getting out of doing that work. We think that a contractor can provide us with a better product and a longer-lasting product, making it more cost-effective to have a contractor do this type of work. So I'd recommend that you accept the bid from Blacktop Services.
So if we're gonna not do it anymore, or do it a different way, why, why do this this year? Why not save that one hundred and eleven thousand dollars?
We, we do have about thirty miles of seal-coated road. We, we intend to keep them as seal-coated roads. I've told you that some of our rural subdivisions are seal-coated, and that seal code needs to be refreshed or reapplied after three to five years. So instead of us doing that reapplication, the county doing that, we would hire a contractor to do that. So it is a good, it is a good maintenance payment structure for our lower-volume roads. So we do intend to stick with seal coating, possibly increase our mileage of seal coating in the future, of course. So, yes, we would like to look at having a contractor do it and see what type of results we get from their work.
County been doing it over here?
We've been doing it for, gosh, probably twenty, thirty years. We have some very old equipment that, that is one of the reasons where we would like to get out of this line of work.
How many people are involved when they do that?
So when, when we're doing it, we usually do it in July, and it takes just about everybody. A mechanic has to be out there with the equipment, because it is so old that we've had some issues in the past with breakdowns. But it takes the truck drivers, guys have to be flagging, somebody has to be on the roller, on a roller. So it takes a lot of the crew, and generally it takes about a week, and so then they're pulled off from other work that has to get done as well.
Any further questions? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the taxes due and payable on submitted eligible persons who continue to be eligible for pursuant to four twenty-seven point nine, Code of Law, including special assessments and rates and charging, including interest fees and costs in accordance with the provision of four twenty-seven point nine of the Code of Law.
So moved.
Be suspended for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a motion at the request for the Fourth Street Coupes to use the Blackhawk County Courthouse parking lot on Saturday, May twenty-sixth, for the staging area for the classic cars and street rides for their annual event be approved and to receive and place on file certificate of insurance for same, and direct the chair to sign for same, permission letter for same.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, we have a work session on IT. Kim Veder.
First of all, I'd like to run through some of the accomplishments that we've made so far in two thousand and eighteen. One thing, a big project was installing our new storage device that provided this space for upcoming projects, but it's a never-ending job, because the more data we collect, the more space we need for it and the backup of it, so that we're able to restore it at some point if need be. We started, started working with the Health Department on a SharePoint project. We updated the HIPAA information, so all of that is in SharePoint right now, and the Health Department has been able to look at that site and see what they think about it. Now, generally, what I've got for Health, for HIPAA is more content-based. They're looking for a little bit more showy site, so we're working on that with the company. We had a major upgrade for our financial and payroll system. We had to replace three servers, updated Windows Server software, updated SQL Server, and so that's completed. Every year we'll have an update, but with the software and the hardware changes, we should be good for three to four years as far as hardware requirements. We're currently posting the board meeting recordings on the county website and YouTube. We have continued maintenance on the tax administration application, changes in law, things that they'd like to see different. Recently, the Board of Review came up with new reasons for when they have their, they appeal their values, sorry, lost my train of thought for a minute. And then we have our rotation for computer and printer replacement. We're upgrading office software in departments that have older versions. We current, this, these statistics are from our recon software where we can collect information about the computers and access them. There's about three hundred, or close to three hundred different pieces of computer equipment that we support with ACES. As you know, we're still on the four hundred for our tax administration application. There were a hundred and twenty-two thousand, forty-seven actual transactions this past month. We still have to, you know, back it up, do the maintenance. Any requests for reports, operations staff are completing those. And the big thing for us as a department and computers or technology people in general is security. And so as I've talked to you before, we have several tools that we got from the state, two FireEye appliances, our tripwire vulnerability scanner, they provide some monitoring services. So we're using those tools to address alerts that are identified by this monitoring system, continue to work on vulnerabilities. We get lists with things that we need to check on, and we work on those, developing plans to reduce identified point of failure. We've gotten a report from ACES, which listed some things. We've gotten a report from ACES, which listed some things that would be a problem. So one example would be the firewall that we have here at the county, we have a two-hour replacement. In a perfect world, would have a hot firewall here, so that it could be just plugged in, and it would just roll over. So that kind of thing, you know, some of it isn't cost-effective, but we're trying to do the best with the funds that we have. Recently, the federal government has made some changes, or maybe it's the state, with how the laptops that need to be set up for elections. They all need to be encrypted, which is something that we haven't done in the past. So we've been working with the election office on that, more of the election office. But because of that, we're participating in the Multi-State Information Sharing Analysis Center, which has the similar, MSI SAC is what it's called. So sometimes ISAC, and it gets a little bit confusing. And now they've developed an Election Infrastructure Information Sharing and Analysis Center. We get weekly updates and daily updates about security issues that are going out, that they're aware of through the count for this country, or probably across the world. And we're going to use the HIPAA risk assessment to identify and mitigate more risk. But the biggest deal, or the most important thing, is security training, because the person in the seat is probably the weakest link. So we took the securing the human training 2015 and 16. We did the know-before training in 16, 17. So we're going to go ahead and have the securing the human training again. People should expect to get the link for that in the next month. I've already been talking to state about that. Current projects, as the board knows, we recently are in the process of terminating our contract with Thompson Reuters for our tax administration application. So we expect that the tax admin, the new RFP should be released within the next two to three weeks, and depending on the schedules required by state law, I hope to have something in place by the end of June. I think we're probably, time-wise, be pretty similar. We're currently migrating the Assessor Document Management software to DocuWare, and another application of that includes the Health, not, I'm sorry, HR Payroll Auditor. The Board Office has some documents in it, the Treasurer's Office, and the engineers are going to participate in that. So we hope to have that done by June or early July. The HIPAA risk assessment that I talked about earlier is going to happen on Thursday of this week. I have a quote for an upgrade for the 400, so that we can get by until we have the tax administration software in place. The HIPAA group is reviewing policies, procedures, and setting up training. We continue to update our website. The Luca update for 2020 census is ongoing, and that is, I shouldn't look at my thing. So that's to make sure we have all the addresses possible identified for the census, and we've got GIS and data to repress projects that we're currently working on. Some goals that we have for 2019 is the implementation of the tax administration software, expand the document management software. We're working with Building Maintenance Department on their voice-over IP project, expand the use of SharePoint, continue to identify and mitigate security risk, and provide technology training for county employees. As you know, we have four people in the department right now, myself, a programmer analyst, and two network technicians that work with ACES to address the issues. I would like to say, though, and I know we don't like to compare county IT staffs with other counties, but if you look at five different counties, each one of them has at least one or at least two senior network administrators or senior network administrators. And so we've talked about the possibility of bringing back an employee and revisiting the contract with ACES. I would like to see, with that in mind, I would like to replace the network administrator position and a long-term goal of getting redundancy for that position, so that when there's a loss, we are not as vulnerable as we could be. Like I said, Johnson, Scott, Story, Potawatomi, and Lynn all have more than one at that more senior position.
Do they have outsourced services?
No, they do not. So the network administrator, some things to think about, and these are the functions that ACES is providing now, as well as some help desk. Is the concern about a potential applicant pool, how long it would take to get that person from posting the position to a start date? And I had HR calculate the cost for a beginning, the beginning step, and a mid-range step, and so it's like $96,000 or $111,000 to get hired, someone hired. And I would like to see a time of transfer of knowledge from ACES to the new employee, if that's what we decided to do. But I think it's important to keep in mind that even if we hire somebody, they're not going to have the skill set of everything we have. I mean, that's a lot for one person to know. So it's likely that we'd need to use a vendor to support special projects. And the analyst position, the programmer analyst position, I'd like to reclassify, work with HR department to have her dedicate her time to the SharePoint implementation, to provide training for office products and HIPAA, website maintenance, she's doing website maintenance and access programming now. So if we would terminate the agreement with ACES, there are some costs that are built into that monthly fee. Part of it is those, there's three Fortigate appliances that they maintain, and we have that two-hour replacement, their software that we pay them to have, that we'd need to have, antivirus software, our email filter, that remote desktop access software, some patching software, and that ticketing software. They also have been providing that know-before training, and we can do a phishing exercise after that's been completed. So we would need to keep in mind that those costs would be on top of what it takes to hire somebody.
Did we have those services before we hired ACES?
Yeah. Well, the piece that we didn't have is recon, we can't, we didn't have remote access to desktops, and that's pretty beneficial with the Health Department.
But we had the other ones?
Yes, we have antivirus, we had the email filter. The patching is a piece that we were doing, would have been done manually, and the ticket is new, too. So we would have to, those two pieces, basically, the recon and the ConnectWise for keeping track of tickets, we are new.
But you had those costs before we went with ACES?
No. No, those two are, yeah, we wouldn't have had.
Oh, but the others, you did have that cost.
Yeah, we have antivirus, and we had the email filter.
And ConnectWise, ACES uses that, we don't utilize that.
We do, we have it too, yeah.
And we use that with our staff.
So as I said, in budget time, their contracted amount hasn't changed, and that's the amount that I do have in the FY '19 budget. The agreement does include that 60-day out like it did before, and we would need to re-sign that contract in May. And I think we, you know, there's, we need to do that, to make sure that whatever decision we make, that we're covered until, and like I said, I would want to make sure that if we did hire somebody, that they were comfortable enough, that we gave them plenty of time to have learning with ACES, to make sure that we're not going through that, how does this work again? So it'd be a smoother transition.
And ACES has been very willing, I think, to do that.
Yes, yes.
To work with us through transition.
You know, some of this may make sense, I don't know, we're going to have to have some more discussion. I kind of wish it was two or three months ago, rather than the month of May that their contract comes due. Even though there is a 60-day out, this probably would have been a good budget item to talk about.
Well, and I didn't bring it up at budget time, that it would be the same amount.
But I mean, as far as figuring out what we're going to do, because either way, you're going to have to keep ACES on before you can give them 60-day notice. But again, I wouldn't cut short who's out there, because you'd be surprised what they're trained in nowadays.
Are you looking at one or two system analysis?
Well, I would, I would like to have two, because if you look at, and I know we don't like to compare ourselves to other counties, but.
Why are we doing it? Yeah.
Yeah, well.
I prefer the comparison.
Yeah.
It's apples to oranges.
Well, but, okay, Johnson County, IT Director, and he's only putting his technical staff. He's got a web person, he's got three programmers yet. He has a network administrator, a service specialist, and then two support people. Scott County has a senior programmer analyst, or I guess, network infrastructure supervisor, and this is as of last year, when we did our, that report for at budget time. Five network system administrators, so I assume that they're our technician-level thing. Story County, network administrator, system administrator, system support technician, and then two support analysts. Potawatomi has an IT supervisor, I mean, they have a director, then a supervisor, network administrator two, network administrator one, lead tech support, and then a tech specialist one, a tech specialist two, a tech specialist three. Lynn County has a network specialist, a network security analyst server, and I'm ASSC, I'm not sure what that, two technical managers, I'm sorry, technical center manager, I'm sorry, Potawatomi County had two network administrator ones, desktop specialist, desktop technician, help desk support, help desk support technician, and then the rest, database analysis, Windows Server, and then the rest of these are applications.
All right, do any of those counties, are they supplying services to somebody else? A city, another county, a school?
I don't believe so, but I can verify that.
Are they providing services for the jail?
They could be, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't really show me anything when you do the comparisons.
Thanks for the information, Kim.
So I would like to go ahead and put that on the contract on the agenda. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And if you come up with any other questions that you want me to check on, I can, I'd be very happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any reports or information from the board?
As I'm hosting a series of town halls, starting next month, the first one will be June 4th, and will be focused on Country View, it'll be at 5:30 at the Waterloo Public Library. Then I've got town halls coming up in Hudson, Laporte City, and Cedar Falls, and I'll be announcing more in the future as well.
Are they all for Country View, or are they?
No, just the first one is focused on Country View. The others are all just general county.
Any other information to come for us? If Donald Antoni wishes for adjournments?
Some move.
Second.